And people may be well said, may be well and truly saved. And thy good purposes for the common human life be realized in our midst. Oh God, grant us salvation of our country, fair as it might be. A country of righteousness, where none shall wrong his neighbor. A country of plenty, where evil and poverty shall be done away with. A country of brotherhood, where all success shall be founded on service. And honor shall be given to the deserving. A country of peace, where government shall rest on the will of the people and the love for the common good. Bless the efforts of those who struggle to make this vision a living reality. Inspire and strengthen our people that they may give time, thoughts and sacrifice to speed the day of the coming beauty of Ghana and Africa. Amen. We'd like to welcome ourselves to the second sitting of the Public Accounts Committee. And like I reiterated yesterday, that we are taking the reports of the Auditor General for the year 2024. And the year 2024 pertains to when my party was in government. And so as part of taking away conflict of interest and also improving transparency and accountability. The section, the standing orders, section 2294 says that once, as the chairman, my party was in government for the 2024 reports, I'll have to hand over to the ranking to take over proceedings for all the reports that pertains to 2024. And so with this, I would like to hand over to the ranking member, Honorable Samuel Attamills, to take over proceedings for today as the report pertains to 2024 audit reports. Honorable ranking member, I know you do a good job, and so I hand over to you. And today we are meeting the Ministry of Defence and the Ministry of Roads and Highways, Office of Government Machinery and the Ministry of Energy. We want to collaborate with you, as well as collaborate with all our stakeholders to make sure that we account for every money that Parliament votes for the ministries, departments and agencies. And so as you come here, we expect you not just to tell us, restate the problem, but to tell us how you have solved the problem per the Auditor General's recommendation. So on this note, I hand over to the ranking member to take over as stipulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think I will call Minister of Defence, please. Before that, before that, if we can introduce ourselves and we'll start from Madam.
So I'm N'ako Yukunol, MP for Eutu Senya East Konsektu 20 Katwa, a member of the committee. Thank you.
My name is Desmond DeGraff-Petou, a member of Parliament for Gomwe East and a member to this committee. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Godfred Seidugisal. I'm MP for Wah East and a member to the committee. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Sebastian there. I am the Member of Parliament for Bandu Constituency and I'm a member of this committee.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Simon Akibanga Wurgo, a member of Parliament for the good people of La Rongo Central and a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Shelly Chee, Member of Parliament for Atuma Wabiya just south in Dashantu region and a member of the committee.
Good morning, my name is Nanos Eji, a member of Parliament for the good people of New Dabino and a member of the committee.
Good morning, my name is Duke Oforieta, Member of Parliament for Fancheco South and a member of the committee.
Good morning, Chair. Jofri Kini is my name, representing the good people of Nkuanthasaf and a member of this committee. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Frank Yaboa, MP for Atuma Mwabiya North in Dashantu region and a member of the committee.
Hello, good morning, my name is Akwesi Kenedu, the Member of Parliament for Menshian of Konsektu 20, Member of the committee.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Ernest Diawenim, Member of Parliament Kumahu and a member of this committee.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Kwame Jijaligapa, MP for Keta, the San City. And then a member, and a deputy ranking member of the committee.
Hello, my name is Samuel Attamills, MP for Commander Edina Iguafo Abrim and the ranking member of the committee.
My name is Abner Osayasari, a member of Parliament for Etuwa East and the chairperson for the Public Accounts Committee. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Michael Amotin, the clerk to the committee. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Michael Ado, Assistant Auditor General Audit Service.
Good morning, my name is Alfred Mirku, Director of Audit Audit Service.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Abeku Kumsen, Director of Audit, Ghana Audit Service.
All right, so now Minister of Defence, you may come forward, please. And you'll be sworn in by the clerk.
Aye.
Aye, Ernest Broja Genfi.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, Honorable Minister, you introduce yourself and then your delegation, please.
Good morning, Mister and Madam Chair. My name is Ernest Broja Genfi, Deputy Minister of Defence. I led a team from the ministry and the Ghana Navy Service. So they will introduce themselves, Chief.
My name is Emmanuel Cate, the Chief Director of the Ministry.
My name is Daniel Azupla Indingo, Director Finance, Minister of Defence.
I am Naval Captain Antoinette Asioshume, Director Supply.
I am Samuel Agama, Chief Accountant.
Okay, your first infraction is on paragraph 1807. And Honorable Chairperson will take care of them. I'm sorry?
It's on page 403. Deputy Minister and your team, I mean, we feel your loss, we feel your pain. And we pray that the Lord will continue to heal you. And also keep safe the soul of your minister, Dr. Edward Kofi Omani-Buama.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
This has to do with unearned salary. And according to the Auditor General's report, there was an unearned salary of about 4,000, 3,009,57 Ghana cedis. And they asked the Auditor General, sorry, the Chief Director to recover the money and pay with interest into government coffers, into the Attorney, Auditor General's recoveries accounts. We just want to find out if that has been done and whether it was also paid with the interest as recommended by the Audit Service.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Yes, the principal amount was recovered. This had been paid into the designated account that they access to pay it into.
Respectfully, I asked a question of whether it has been paid as recommended by the Auditor General. The Auditor General is saying that retrieve that money and interest at Bank of Ghana rate. So you have to come again with your answer.
Honorable Chair, after the audit, a management letter was given to us. And we acted on that management letter. On that management letter, we were asked to retrieve the amount that was unearned. It was not indicated that we should retrieve it with interest. It was the audit report which came after, which we have already taken action on the principle that we retrieved and paid into.
Audit Service, can you please confirm what you have just said?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the amount of 3,957 has been retrieved and paid into the AG's recoveries account for onward transfer into the consolidated fund.
Commandation in this report is that they pay with interest. And they are saying that in your management letter to them, that interest bit wasn't part of it. So we just want you to confirm. And then we can clear them that they have fulfilled the mandate based on the recommendations that you gave to them in the management letter.
Yes, Honorable Chair, when we issue you with a management letter, you have one month to take action. Now, if you don't take action and the matter is escalated into the AG's report, the recommendation will be different from what is in the management letter. So in the AG's report, you are going to have a recovery with interest.
But do they know that if they are not able to recover within that stipulated time, there are consequences? Do they know? Because they should know. If they don't know, they can't act on it. But if they know, that is when you hold them responsible for not acting on it.
So Honorable Chair, as part of the audit process, we try to let them understand the processes involved with regards to the audit. And they are made aware that if you don't act on our observation and it gets into the draft and you still don't act on the draft management letter and then the formal management letter is issued to you and you still don't act on that and it comes into the AG's report. The expectation is that you are going to have a different recommendation. And so they would have to look out for the AG's report and see the recommendation that has been indicated in it for them to comply. So we expect them to comply with what has been stated in the AG's report.
Thank you very much, Audit Service. But I think moving forward, we should also state that in the management letter so that the reports, the final reports, should they not do it and the management letter that you'll be holding will, I mean, will correspond to the same message. And so, but on this note, you have said that they have discharged the obligations as in paying the 3,957. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, and well noted too.
And Sir, is this the finance officer, the one who spoke on the...
Yes, that's the Director of Finance.
Director of Finance, Director of Finance, just to let you know, there's a violation of Public Financial Management Act 2016. And if you are going to be the financial officer, you need to know that because if we are insisting on this penalty on it, you'll be suspended. So unearned salaries, it should be anything of the past.
Well noted, Honorable.
The next fraction is on paragraph 1811 and it's by Honorable Kini, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This has to do with overpayment of expenditure. A report from the Auditor General indicates that an amount of 11,794 was overpaid on two PVs. The Auditor General recommended that the Chief Director should recover the total amount in full and pay to the Auditor General recoveries account in Bank of Ghana. Failure to do that accounts to the Chief Director himself, paying. I want to ask whether such money has been recovered.
Honorable Chair, yes, there were two different companies. The first one had some outstanding payment that we did not pay him. So we deducted what we overpaid to him from it and paid him the difference. And then the other ones retrieved the monies and paid into the Auditor General's account that was given to us. Thank you, Honorable. What internal control measures have you put in place to keep such shortfalls? Thank you, Chair. This happened because of the invoices that they stated. There were itemized invoices with different amounts and then a total. So casting the total, you will not get the total that they had on the invoice. And then the memo that was written for approval for payment also stated that wrong total on it. And then it was brought to the account unit to pay. So the officer relied on those submissions but did not cast to see that the total is in tandem with the details. So from now on, because of that error that was detected, we now put measures in place to recast because we relied on officers based on the trust that we know they will do their work up to this. But now, upon all that, we will still go ahead to cast to get the assurance ourselves before processing. Thank you, Honorable. Okay. What are some of the measures you put in place? From the account directives, the measure we put in place is to ensure that any bill that comes to us, we will not rely on the ones submitting. We will recast and be sure that the totals agree before we pay. And then we also communicated, this came from the procurement unit, we also communicated to them about this anomaly for them to be sure of what they are bringing to us for payment. So we are collaborating with them not to repeat such a thing again in the future. Thank you. Auditor General, can you confirm from your outfit whether it's been paid? Yes, the entire amount has been recovered. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph 1814, non-competitive procurement. And when it comes to non-competitive procurement, it says, the recommendation says, we recommended that the chief naval officer should initiate the process of implementing the provisions under section 92 of the Public Procurement Act 2003, Act 63, as amended for the implementation of the sanctions against officers whose actions occasioned the anomaly. Now let me read you what 92 says. Public Procurement Act 92. Any person who contravenes any of these provisions in this act commits an offence. And where no penalty has been provided for the offence, the person is liable on summary conviction to a fine not exceeding 1,000 penalty units or a term of imprisonment not exceeding five years or to both. So this one, chief naval officer, we are recommending that we send it to the Attorney General for prosecution. So auditors, take note of that. And then our clerk, take note of that. So you and the Attorney General will be handling this later on. Next infraction is on paragraph 1829 and it's by Honorable DeGraff-Petou.
Chair, this is for Interior, if I'm correct. Yes, please.
Okay, all right, Minister of Defence, you are done. Thank you very much. You are discharged. So now we call Office of Government Machinery.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please introduce yourself to the committee.
I'm the acting CEO of the Northern Development Authority.
My name is Swaliho Abdulbaki, the acting finance director.
My name is Mustafa Barber-Mobashia, the acting internal auditor.
I am Insol Donald, Head of Policy Planning, Monitoring and Evaluation.
Okay, we are done.
Where is the head of Office of Government Machinery?
He informed us that he was doing something, but he would join us.
He is what? One more time, please.
He was told that he was doing some work in the office, but he would join us.
And the work is more important than coming to face Parliament?
I think it is for the...
So we'll suggest that you wait till he gets here, then we'll take you. We'll take Minister of Energy, please.
Thank you.
Chair, what do you respect? I think the energy is supposed to be here by two. But you just called them and I don't know whether they are here or they are not here.
Office of Government Machinery, have you called your ball stick? I'm here. Where is he right now? Who is he? Is what? Please come and speak in the microphone.
Yeah.
Mention your name.
My name is Arafat Suliman Abdulai.
Yes.
The head of Government Machinery is Dr. Wayo. I spoke to him after you registered your indirect disapproval of him not being here. And he said, oh, supporting him, he is with the Deputy Chief of Staff, doing something for her. But he is going to tell her right away that he is needed here. So he is on his way in the next minute. I just spoke to him.
He was away, he was supposed to be here at 10 o'clock.
I should, I should think so.
Because we are live on TV.
Yeah, I should think so.
The whole country is watching us.
Yeah.
So which one is more important?
Who is the head of Office of Government Machinery?
The Chief Director I spoke to.
The Chief Director is the head of Office of Government
The chief director is the head of Office of Government Machinery?
That is the arrangement.
And Dr. Wyo has been in the system for God knows when. You take up responsibility, come and discharge your mandates, bear the responsibility you have taken and you are running away from that responsibility. Please take the Public Accounts Committee serious. You are supposed to appear here with your head, the head of the entity. So that if your head is not here, you cannot come and sit here and say you are taking that responsibility. And the letter we wrote to you was very, very clear. So respectfully, wherever he is, he has to come for us to continue with proceedings. That is part of his mandate as the chief director of the Office of Government Machinery. When we take up roles, we live by them and we discharge the mandates every time we are called upon to do that.
Now, what, you are shooting the messenger? You're shooting the messenger, can I say that?
That said, maybe next time we wouldn't even accept the chief director. What has happened in the past is that Office of the Government Machinery always comes with the deputy chief of staff. Deputy chief of staff. A chief director, yes. Every ministry has a chief director. But Office of the Government Machinery is always headed by the deputy chief of staff. So please, when you go back, tell them, this is a parliamentary committee. We cannot just, we want people who are responsible. So that when we are, we are demanding of them, we'll do that. Please.
When you are coming for your budget hearings, who heads the committee?
It's the chief director.
When you are coming for your budget hearings, who heads the committee?
It's the chief director.
That is not true. You come, just like the vice chairman said, you come with a deputy chief of staff. When you are coming to Ministry of Finance for your budget hearings, who do you come with? And when you are coming to Parliament for your budget hearings, who do you come with? Did you just move to the Office of Government Machinery?
So is the chief director we have been coming with?
No.
We have never had that.
I was at the Ministry of Finance and you came with your deputy chief of staff. Even to Parliament, you also came with your deputy chief of staff. So respectfully, let's do the needful.
So is this message for me?
Please turn off your mic and make sure you call your chief director to attend upon the committee as soon as possible.
Ladies and gentlemen and honourable members, since we are waiting for the chief director to get here, we'll suspend him for thirty minutes. Thank you very much.
Aye.
Aye, Alaji Abu Bakar Wyo.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty Allah.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me Allah.
Would you introduce yourself and the people that you came with, please?
Yes, my name is Alaji Abu Bakar Wyo, the acting chief director of Office of the President.
And my name is Emmanuel Abiri Ina, the acting CEO of the Northern Development Authority.
My name is Swaliho Abdul Bakhi, the acting finance director.
My name is Mustafa Barba Mubashir, the acting internal auditor.
I am in South Donald Akolu Malga, head of policy planning, monitoring and evaluation.
Acting Chief Director, did you get the letter from Ministry, from the Public Accounts Committee inviting Office of the President or Office of Government Machinery to today's hearing, please?
Yes, Honourable Chair.
Why didn't you turn up at ten for the meeting as stipulated in the letter?
I was to come with them and I asked that because there were few things that I needed to tidy up in the office. So I asked that they should take the lead.
Chief Director, how long have you been with the ministry? Or how long have you been with the public service?
Twenty-seven years, please.
Twenty-seven years? You should know better. I wasn't expecting you to come and give any explanation. But to just say that, yes, you received it, you are sorry, can we start? It cost the nation close to an hour because we're waiting for you. You are the head of the entity, you have been given that mandate, that role. And you have to come here to discharge your responsibility. Tell us you were tidying up something in the office. I don't think this is the way to go. We are all here for the interest of our nation. We have all been given positions and roles. We all know our mandates and we are supposed to discharge our mandates. You know that nobody comes to the Public Accounts Committee without at least the head of the entity. And so you ask them to go and that you join us later. I don't think that is the way to go. You have been with us, you have been with the public service for twenty-seven good years. And you should know that this is not the way we should go.
Thank you so much.
Then also say, I think when you came, I mentioned to you that the practice has been that, you know, the auditors have done their work. The reason why we are here is to look at one, why the infraction happened, the possible amendments that ought to happen, I mean, with the laws, the regulations, the acts, even if we have to amend some portions of the constitution to ensure that accountability is held high. That is why this committee is seated. That is why we are live on TV. And that is why the entire country is interested in what we do. And so please, today we would pardon that the chief director and the staff represent the Office of Government Machinery. But in future, if you are appearing before the committee, we want persons we can hold responsible, political heads, persons that have been appointed by the president to appear before us. I mean, that is where changes can easily happen. There are those who can bring amendments to Parliament and all of that. So please, the next time when you are coming, just like what has happened in the past, come with at least a deputy chief of staff who handles administrative matters at the presidency too. Answer questions pertaining to Office of Government Machinery. Thank you.
Well noted, sir.
Sir, I'm Kuros. You say you had to tie up some loose ends. What kind of loose ends were you trying to tie up?
Saying that, but truth be told, because I just use the Quran to... If I didn't know what I wanted to do, even go beyond nine o'clock. Unfortunately, I needed to present what I did to a superior officer. And that is where they delete, okay? I'm very sorry for that.
I'm sure you come to Parliament for a budget hearing.
Yes, please.
Would you send them without you coming?
No, please.
Okay, let's move on. The first infraction is on paragraph twenty-one thirty. And Honourable DePila will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, it's page four seventy-seven, paragraph two one three, on end salary. Chief Director, yeah, two one three zero. Chief Director, do you... Before I, I hope we are on the same page. Are you here? Madam, Sir Chairman, it appears they are not here.
Dr. Wyo, is Council of State not under Office of Government Machinery? You are the chief director and you are supposed to come with all the agencies under you.
Yes, please.
Is Council of State under the Office of Government Machinery?
Yes, please. They were all informed, they got the letters, please.
Sir, who was supposed to inform Office of Council of State that they were supposed to be here? I'm sorry?
Office of the President.
Office of the President?
Yes, please.
And who is the chief director over there? Please speak into the microphone, because...
I say I'm the acting chief.
The whole country is watching you. So explain yourself. And you were supposed to let them know.
Yes.
How come they are not here?
Please, I have to find out because they received our letter inviting them to this committee.
When did you send them the message that they were supposed to come here?
A day after we received the, I can't recall the exact date, but a day after we received your letter.
Sir, this is my third term being in this committee.
Yes.
And this is most irregular. Most irregular. Chief Director, you get a letter from Parliamentary Committee. Come with all your agencies. Your agencies don't show up. Do you know how many offences those people who report to you have committed in the Auditor General's report? I mean, do you have a copy of Auditor General's report?
Yes, we have, we have.
Do you know about the infractions?
Yes, I know some, please.
You know some?
Yeah.
And you know that Council of State has some infractions?
Yes, please.
And you are not here with them? Or maybe you are going to respond to the issues that Council of State has?
No, they are supposed to be here, please.
But you are the head. And you are supposed to bring them. Is that how government works? Okay, now let's go to those ones who are here because we are working closely to contempt of parliamentary law. Very close to it. Council of State is only a walk from here, just about two, three minutes' walk. So call somebody, we need to see them now. Somebody who is responsible. Okay, now, is Northern Development Authority here?
Yes, we are here.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph two one three three. And Honourable Osayasa will take that. Okay, now, that one is also for Council of State. If that is the case, let's go to Northern Development Authority. And it's on two one three six. And that will be myself taking it. You have unpresented payment vouchers to the tune of four hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-six. What have you done so far?
We have presented them to the auditors, please.
Presented what?
The payment vouchers, yeah.
Sir, do you know Regulation eighty-two of the Public Financial Management Regulation? Have you, do you have any idea about the Public Financial Management Regulations?
Yes, I do.
And what does it say? Regulation eighty-two, what does it say?
That the vouchers shall be accompanied by authorisation from the head of accounts.
And what happens if you don't have the vouchers accompanying the PVs?
It's a violation of the regulation.
So what would be the punishment for it, sir? Look, we are not playing games.
No, I think that we...
What is the punishment?
I cannot tell the specific, I don't know that.
But you told us that you know it. Sir, the whole country is watching you and they are watching you live. Explain to us. PVs to the tune of over four hundred thousand. And you couldn't present it to the auditors when they came. You tell us.
I'm sorry, the issue is that, I mean, I inherited these situations. And then when the auditors came, after they had done their, they have submitted their management letter, I worked hard to ensure that we presented the rest of them.
When did you take over?
That was in March when the audit had gone.
March when?
Twenty twenty-five.
That's when you took over?
Yes.
Who was, who was there before you?
The former CEO, Sule Sambian.
And where is he?
He's no longer in office, so...
So Chief Director, these people report to you. Please speak into the microphone, sir. Because I want the whole country to hear your answers.
Yes, please.
And when they did their audit, when the former person was there, he didn't present PVs to the tune of over four hundred?
Look.
Yes, please.
The image you are presenting to the world of yourself, I don't think that is what I know you for. I have known you for a while.
Yes, please.
If you tell us that it's just a screenshot that you are looking at, you are the acting chief director of Office of Government Machinery.
Yes.
That is the presidency. That is the presidency. Is this how you want to represent the presidency? Not well prepared? You don't even know, you have screenshots of it. You can answer to all of them, you can answer to some of them. I don't think this is what and how we have to treat things when we have been given positions.
Yes.
And authority.
Please, Honourable Chair, I don't want to...
Please, Honorable Chair, I don't want to, uh, go back to history. We are encountering all these problems because of where Northern Development started and where they came from. We are aware, even budget, you know, I was handling OGM budget for a very long time. All the three development authorities, not only NDA. Everything was done at Ministry of Finance. Even quarterly allotment, Office of the President then, we didn't even know what was
So, if you heard me yesterday, we said you do not come and state the problem. Come and tell us how you have addressed the problem. The Auditor General gave you the reports. There was an exit conference and between the exit conference and today being the twentieth of August. What have you done about it? We are not here for you to rehash or, I mean, state the complaints. But at least, others have come here, they have shown us how they have resolved the issue. You are not the only one to come and complain about you at this or that or where it was done, where it wasn't done. You met the auditors, they gave you the reports. You were supposed to go through the reports and find solutions to them. So you cannot come and sit in front of the Public Accounts Committee and then lament on issues when you were given some the mandates and also the time to address these issues. Respectfully, Dr. Waiyo, I don't think this is the image you want to present, to give your, um, show to, and the people of Ghana. Because I know you very well and I know that you are a very competent person whilst I worked with you at the Ministry of Finance.
Please, our Director Internal Audit is here. We have our own internal audit committee. All the, the three agencies that you invited, there haven't been any occasion that they brought anything before the Office of the President Audit Committee. They haven't, they are here. Northern Development Authority have their own audit issues. That's where I wanted to build up my point from. That they've been over pampered over the years and they feel that they can't do things on their own. That is the challenge that we are facing today. The officials are here, who, 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 who looks at their audit issues? It's just on paper that they were under OGM or they are still under OGM. Or else they were operating as if they were autonomous. And I, when I took over just a little over a month
By you telling us this, what do you expect the public accounts to do? What do you expect the auditors who have come to the various institutions to look into their books? And also give you a report on how things are and how you can fix them based on their recommendations? You don't think their recommendations are important, but all you, you think you can do is to come and sit here and lament about it? Not even looking at the recommendations to see how best, ask the Chief Director how you can address this. I don't think this is how we want you to represent, um, the Office of Government Machinery in front of the Public Accounts Committee. You can do better than this.
But, but, Madam Chair, I think, I think the Dr. Waiyo's reputation is underlying. And respectfully, I would plead that we allow him to explain his problem. I think that we will get a better picture of the situation he inherited. What challenges he's facing, because he's a man of twenty-seven years' experience. So this cannot be happening in vacuum. There may be structural challenges and I think that in the name and the spirit of fairness. Let's hear what challenges he has. Maybe there may be issues for us as a committee to take up and help fix so that this doesn't recur. So I think that it's only fair, we allow the man to explain what challenges he's facing and then we can take it from there. Thank you.
I think we will do that, but my only issue is that when the auditors came, did you explain your challenges to the auditors? The auditors, were you made aware of the issues that he's complaining about?
Honorable Chair. Chair, we, Chair, Chair. Dr. Waiyo is making some argument that So Honorable Chair, the entity we engaged was the NDA. And we, we didn't have any interview with Dr. Waiyo. And so we can't say whether, what he's saying is true or not. We didn't have any engagement with it was, but the copy of the report obviously will get to him.
So
Doc, please go ahead and explain yourself.
I was building a point and as I indicated earlier, the NDA officials are here. And the auditor himself confirmed it. When they finished exit conference or whatever, we're not involved. And as I, as I indicated earlier, this were, this was an agency under OGM that we thought that we could control them just like any other agency. But like I mentioned, they were operating on their own. As I, even budget. Even budget, Office of the President did not have control over their allotment that goes to this, not only NDA. The three development authorities, we didn't have control over that. Much more spending money and auditors find out from the auditors. Whether, like he rightly said, whether we're engaged, nobody, and, uh, NDA itself did not finish us with any information. Till I got the, your invitation letter
So respectfully, how were their monies dispersed?
I think we should have brought in Ministry of Finance.
Respectfully, how was their monies dispersed?
The allotments went straight to them. They applied to Ministry of Finance for the release of the funds. They are here.
There was no letter from Office of the, uh, of Government Machinery instructing Ministry of Finance to do that?
No, not to my knowledge, because I was handling the budget. Because, you know, Gifmex, they were processing their things online. And since a typical Ghana issue, once you don't get problems, they were comfortable. This issue, now we are around this table has come up. They never complained to Office of the President that, uh, we're encountering these audit issues. Like I mentioned, our Director Internal Audit is the Office of the President. We can find out from them. Even internal auditing, they have their own structures. The audit committee, they have their own structures. And nobody, I took over just, uh, two, almost two months ago. No, there's no handing over anywhere that NDA had these issues and that you will be going to Parliament to receive your letter. And since I held the Quran, I can't say otherwise, but what I know, and that's exactly what I'm saying. They are here. If, uh, when, when the, uh, this Ministry of, uh, what, Special Development, when it was reduced to a secretariat, that was when they offloaded them to OGM. And they were still operating as if they were, they had their ministry elsewhere. And permit me to say that Ministry of Finance encouraged this. There were issues that I said, look, you are under OGM, let your
Where was their budget? Where was their budget placed? Which entity had their budget?
It was placed under Office of Government Machinery budget.
Thank you, thank you.
But we didn't have control over how they were
If a budget is placed under you and you sit on TV and tell Ghanians that the budget was under you, you were in charge of their budget, but you, you did not have control. Um, then, um, we, we, we are in trouble here because
I'm not cutting you short, that's why I mentioned Ministry of Finance.
Respectfully, the budget sits with Office of Government Machinery. Every allocation, every disbursement will have to be authorized by Office of Government Machinery before
And that was not the case here. Let's be very honest, that wasn't the case here.
Then the auditors, I think you still have to go back to Office of Government Machinery and do a thorough job.
Unravel that as well. The, the auditor should have discovered that as well. Because no, no official from Office of the President allotted any money to, uh, the Development Authority. It came from Ministry of Finance. Even Capex items, we did not control anything.
Chair, I think, uh, Dr. Waiyo is making advancing some point. Uh, the agencies that are concerned are here. So they need to answer for themselves. And then going forward as a committee, uh, with the auditors recommend. He is barely two months in office. And then who was there previously and then these things were going on. So we need to know all that.
Okay, Northern Development Authority, you are here. And so what has happened to the unpresented vouchers of over four hundred thousand Ghana cities?
We have presented them.
How come those could not be presented at the time of the audit?
I wasn't there at that time, so, uh, yes.
So if you weren't there, where did you get the PVs?
I think I came and worked with the finance team and then they were able to trace and present them.
This sounds like a science fiction. That finance team, that finance team was there before you came, right?
Yes.
And they couldn't help put the PVs together until you came there? Then they, they put the PVs together?
Uh, I think they were already working with the, uh, auditors on those issues.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
The finance officer at Northern Development Authority, is that person around?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Were you there during the audit?
No, please.
How long have you been at that place now?
Barely two months now.
Barely two months?
Yes.
Is Northern Development Authority still in existence?
Yes, as far as I know.
Really?
Yes.
So I see over here, air ticket for official duties, thirty-one thousand four hundred. Uh, that was cash. Out-of-station allowance, changing of vehicle ties. And, uh, and Upper West Office in press, fifteen thousand. Another one, um, those was in, um, October first, twenty twenty-four. Out-of-station committee allowance, administrative expenses, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety. Night allowance, fifty-five, was he a night watchman to be collecting this? And that was also cash. Cost of medical screening, sixteen thousand. So where did you get the receipts and the PVs were not there? So when were these manufactured?
Uh, luckily enough, uh, I think that, uh, I mean, yes, I mean, the finance team. In fact, we have had a complete overhaul of the finance team. But the original finance team worked the process up to, uh, our full takeover. So, uh, a lot of the issues were dealt with the external auditors with the previous, by the previous finance team.
Do you have any of those people in the previous finance team around?
None at all.
Hey, I've been sick apart here.
Chairman, thank you very much. Director, are you the person that provided the auditors with the PVs to retire their expenditures?
No.
So who provided them to the auditors? The former finance team?
The former finance team, yes.
That cannot be a fact. Auditors, have they retired their expenditures with PVs?
Yes, Honorable Chair, they, they have done so. Yes, Honorable Chair, we trying to confirm the exact date, but it was after the AG's report was submitted to Parliament.
Yeah, it's important because they said they took over two months ago. So we'd want to know when they retired that. Because that will play into us finding out actually who actually prevented, presented those PVs. Because if they said the former did, it would not have found way into the audit report. If they indeed had presented that to you and they had walked through the audit with you, presented those, it would not have found way into the audit report. So it's important that we get to know when those were presented.
Honorable Chair, you know the report was submitted in June, um, this year. And from my engagement with the auditor in charge. They presented it after the report was submitted to Parliament. So somewhere around, um, July, we have to be specific with the date, yeah.
So it means it was presented
The former finance officers who presented them.
By that time, if it's July, that means they had taken over because they said two months and we are in August and August hasn't ended.
Honorable Chair, we will have to come back with a specific date.
Let me see that the finance, uh, person here had joined when the exiting team was there for about a month or so before they exited, so he worked with them to ensure that that was done.
So the finance director joined the previous team to have the audit and they could not provide it for them. And it found way into the audit report and it still wants us to believe that we've been able to find those original PVs to retire the expenditure.
Uh, respectfully, I don't think that's what he was saying. He's saying that the finance person here joined the former finance director before they exited. And that was how come they were able to raise the PVs and then give them to the auditors for verification. That's what he's saying. He's not saying that he joined them during the audit.
I see. These infractions would happen because they were not able to provide the PVs and to find way here. So if he was there with them, the former team that participated in the audit. Yes, then they should have found it then, but not after the audit report was issued. If you claim you weren't there, you weren't going to find it now after the audit report has been issued. That is the point.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the issue is, uh, a bit complex. So when we came in, uh, I joined the, the, the former finance team. About, uh, I worked with them for about one month before they exited. And at the time I joined, I was not made the Head of Finance. I was assisting the Head of Finance then. And that time they had already finished the audit. That was some, somewhere in June twenty, uh, twenty-fourth, twenty, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, June. So that was the time I was made to assist the former finance director. So I came in to help them search for those PVs. You know, we had accounts officers who worked on them. And they, I had to put pressure on them to search everywhere in the office. Because they mentioned that during the time, they had several engagements with, uh, audit teams. You know, moving PVs from Tamale to Accra and then back to Tamale, you know, all that. So they said during that period of the audit engagement, they couldn't find the PVs. So we had to put in effort to search through very well and then we actually found the original PVs. And as I speak now, I have all those PVs here. And we submitted same to the auditors, uh, on, on the twenty-fourth, June. Yes.
Okay, um, let's move on, on this one, but we are not, we'll come back. The next offense is on paragraph twenty-one thirty-nine. Unrecovered salary advance of over five hundred thousand. Um, Honorable Opoku Anson would, uh, take, uh, take care of that.
Yes, um, so it has to do with, um, some advances you made to ten officers of your authority. And, um, the total sum, like mentioned, is five hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-three point four eight. And you are aware that this person is defaulted. Um, when the auditors came to you, you gave them assurance that you are going to adhere to their recommendation, which was to ensure that the accountant recovers the total sum. Have you done that?
Uh, we have written to them, but, uh, we haven't yet received payments in.
This was an audit that was done in twenty twenty-four. This was an audit that was done in twenty twenty four and, um, we are in, uh, August twenty twenty five. When did you write to them? And, um, did you at least get an acknowledgement of the correspondence you gave to them?
When I took over, uh, and then the audit issues emerged, I wrote around the end of April to them. Um, the former CEO and his deputies took a last chunk of the money. And they had communicated to me that they had started processes for their salary payments. They hadn't been paid their salary at all. And they were hoping that if their salaries eventually paid, we should deduct it from their salaries.
So you are referring to, uh, Sule Sambian. Who was the acting chief executive?
Yes, Sule Sambian and his deputies.
Zoga.
Zoga, yes.
Janet Bibi Bashir and Idi Zakaria.
Yes.
Those are the persons, then they have given you assurance that while salaries are paid.
Yes.
So have you taken steps to, uh, prompt at least the controller about these things? I mean, the persons, the entities that are responsible for paying there. Because we don't want you to come to this committee next year when this infraction surfaces again. For you to tell us that the salaries were paid into the account, but they refuse to go by that agreement that you have had with them. So we need to take steps, at least if, um, some arrangement can be done so that, uh, these monies can be paid from source. Can, can this be done, Chief Director?
Yes, please, can be done.
So, um, well, because it's about recoveries, um, auditors would beg that you follow this matter up and kindly brief the committee on, on, because this is a huge sum, five hundred and forty eight thousand. It's no small money. I mean, yesterday, uh, Edem Abana said some monies can do two boreholes. I think this can do like fifty boreholes. So, so we ought to ensure that the monies are retrieved. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Well noted, Honorable Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
Chairman, I only wanted to find out, does it mean that, uh, for the entire period that they served as management of, uh, the NDA, the entire period they were not paid?
Yes, I think, uh, NDA had a lot of, uh, CEO, uh, changes. And this team were there for just barely a year and some months. So, uh, they were not regularized and paid.
For a whole year they weren't paid? And how were, how, so how were they surviving?
Uh, you, you have to ask them, sorry.
Well, I, I know you, you, since you took over, have you been paid?
We are in the process of, uh.
No, we don't want another one to come.
Just to draw your attention to the fact that the auditors recommended that a payment should be done with interest at a prevailing rate of the Bank of Ghana. So please kindly take note of that. And, um, I mean, I like, I like the steps that you take. I mean, you seem to be correcting all these anomalies. It's something that we need to commend you for, but please do, do that.
These were people who served the country and actually they were not paid and they lived on these advances. They were going to charge interest on these advances. They were not being, the, the, the state is not being fair to them. The state is not being fair to them because these are, uh, uh, public officials engaged by the states and they worked for over a year, they were not paid. They lived on advances and then they are now going to repay the advances and that the advances they have to pay interest on them. They were not being fair to them.
Um, okay.
Chairman, let me, let me find out this, Chairman.
Okay.
I want to find out from Chief Director, do they have any entitlement, like benefits to claim at the end of their service to the state? I mean, the officers who, uh, who were given salary advance.
Yes, please, they were political appointees, so they have something to take.
Yeah, so then it's easy for you to get this money. So you can tie it to whatever benefits that you'll be claiming. Yeah, so you should take steps to ensure that whatever benefits that they are entitled to, you deduct it as source and give whatever balance. If there is no balance and they will have to come and top up, then they bring whatever top up. But ensure that you put in measures to take it from whatever that they will be collecting.
Yes, Chairman, this, um, I think I need to find out from the auditors. Um, are you able to explain to us, if you look at paragraph two one four one, why in, in these circumstances, as explained by Honorable Bawa, uh, people are not being paid. They had to take monies from, uh, some accounts to ensure that they at least pay school fees of their kids. And that you recommend that they pay interest, um, at a prevailing Bank of Ghana rate. There, there may be reasons for it, so we want to know why the auditors recommended this.
Honorable Chair, this advance was given to them purposely for rent, for, to, to pay for their rent. And it is not because they were not receiving, um, salaries. And that informed our recommendation that once you are supposed to pay back within stipulated time and you were not able to do so, then we ask you to refund with interest. However, we are before the committee and I think that you have the powers either to uphold our recommendation or otherwise. Thank you.
Sir, uh, Northern Development Authority, you said these were for salaries. But the auditor is telling you that these are not for salaries and that these were for accommodation, rent.
The heading captures the salary advances.
Okay. Um, yeah, they need to pay with interest.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Let's.
To be fair.
Yes.
The, the heading says salaries. The auditors are saying rents.
Yes.
The auditors altered this report.
Yes.
To be fair to the gentleman there.
Yes.
The auditors should come back and help us reconcile this.
Auditors, auditors, you go back to find out if it's rent or if it's part of salaries. And what they are saying is it's part of rent and not necessarily salaries. If it's rent, they will pay interest on it. If it's salaries, they will not pay any interest on it.
Honorable Chair.
How many, how many chairpeople do we want to have? Okay, let's move on. The next paragraph is on.
Mr. Chairman, uh, please let's end, uh, on a sound note. Right now, because they were not being paid, that's why they give the salary, uh, 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 advance to pay rent. And now that their rents are going to be computed and paid to them. So if we are charging them interest on that, I don't think we are being fair.
Honorable member.
So I'm pleading with you that, uh, I'm, 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 I'm pleading to the leadership of the committee that they should pay this money, but we should waive the interest aspect of it since the committee.
Honorable member, that's why I ask the auditors. They need to find out if this is rent or just salary. If it's rent payment, then the interest will stand. If it's not rent payment but it's part of salary, then there shouldn't be any interest on salaries. The next, the next, uh, I, uh, infraction is on paragraph two one four three. And Honorable Akwesi, Akwesi Kuneu will handle that one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this has to do with, uh, the receivables of Northern Development Authority. And the auditors, uh, in going through a receivable books, found that there are fourteen clients who owe the necess of eighty two million Ghana cities. And they recommend that you recover these amounts. The accountant lead the recovery of these amounts from the debtors. Has any recovery been made from the eighty two million Ghana cities?
Uh, no, sir.
No.
No, sir.
So what, what efforts have you put in to recover some of these amount, eighty two million? And you see, if you look at the infractions, uh, if you look at the table there, you have point three, number three. It has to do with a fixed deposit with man capital. And if you look at point five, it also has to do with, uh, plus one investment. And I'm sure that one to be an investment that the NDA did. By your own self, have you confirmed these figures to be true as the auditors have put here?
Uh, these are longstanding, uh, receivables. Uh, in fact, some of them are over ten years, uh, and over. So there has been several attempts to recover them, which has not been, uh, successful. So I think the one, uh, the man capital one is something that we are working on that they have, uh, they have promised. We have started the process and they have agreed that they will give us some two hundred thousand and then this, uh, within, uh, the next few, uh, one, this document we are being processing for. So they have been paying that one in also in bits. So I think that we, but many of them, we just think that they are just, even the documentations now to find them are quite difficult. Like you see the one Minister of Finance, Minister of Education and others, the documentations are not really available now for us.
You said the documentations to establish these are difficult. How did you establish that some of these are the materials? You find as on Tabai here, you find a Greek input here, you have tractor debtors here. Another receiver will sales of maize, unique savanna. But if you tell me Ministry of Roads recover, uh, yes, I think like they were used to implement projects in the north and paid for by the Minister of Finance using, uh, uh, NDA money. So in the way projects were executed and paid for. So, but at that time, the understanding was that Minister of Finance was loaning the money from the Sada team. So if you take the Minister of Finance one, it is probably the oldest debt standing here on these documents. So it means that you have documentation to it. So can you recount that it's difficult finding documentation to this? It is just that you've put in no effort to recover. You find them as, oh, the Ministry of Roads, these are government institutions to government institution. Because if you tell me that you can recall that they were used to implement project and NDA money was used to pay, it means you have proper documentation to it.
Now, you know, as I said, these are over ten years and many CEOs and, uh, things have come. You can hear the narrative, the story about it, but you cannot, uh, directly find the documentations which are attributable to them.
So it means you are not going to put in any effort to recover. Because you've told me that ages of CEOs have come and they did not recover, so it means you are also not going to recover.
That is not my intention, but I, I think that, uh, I mean, the reality of the situation must be placed here for the understanding. If we are able to trace the documents, otherwise we may ask that if you can help, then we find a way to resolve this issue. But it's quite a challenge for me going forward. Okay.
So, um, sir, I'll be grateful if you can finish us with an, like an age analysis of the debts. And then based on that, we can use it to retrieve or make that connection where it will help us to retrieve the money. So if you can have an age analysis of the debts, uh, and then maybe we will take it out from there.
I'm very grateful for this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And auditors, I'm sure you saw something about that, right? Age analysis documents on these.
Yes, Honorable Chair, so they will be part of our working papers.
Okay, so if we can get copies of that, that will help us decide what to write off. And has it been that they hold you this amount?
I think that one is almost from twenty twelve.
From twenty twelve?
Yes.
Hey, sir, that was, uh. All right, so get us that, those analysis and then I will see what to go on with it. The next infraction is on. Yes, Honorable Ed.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, I want to find out, I keep hearing ten years, ten years. When was the Northern Development Authority established?
Uh, it was originally operating under SADA, repealed and a new act established. Okay. These were transferred to NDA.
Okay, so we are, the, the debts you are talking about started from SADA? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next infraction is on paragraph two one four six and that will be, uh, Honorable Neno Osaya-Jin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Director, this one is on four eight zero. Non remittance, non remittance of withheld taxes, one oh three thousand six five four Ghana cities. Session one one seven of the Income Task Act, twenty fifteen. Act eight nine six states that, one one seven one states that a withholding agent shall pay to the Commissioner General within fifteen days after the end of each calendar month. A tax that has been withheld in accordance with this division during the month. The auditors noted that a total of, a total amount of one oh three thousand six five four point six eight was withheld in taxes on payments of payments to staff and other beneficiaries for various activities without remitting same to the tax authority. The auditors recommended that the chief executive officer should ensure that the accountant remiss the total tax to the Commissioner General, G R A without delay. And any penalty arising should be personally borne by the chief executive officer and the accountant. Your management response was that management has taken note of the recommendation. I would like also to read to you the same section, section one one seven three of Act eight six nine. It says that a withholding agent who fails to withhold tax in accordance with the division shall pay the tax that should be, that should have been withheld in the same manner and at the same time as tax that is withheld.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to find out from the chief executive officer and the accountant whether they've done the needful.
Yes, we have done the needful, the taxes were withheld and then paid.
Please can the auditors confirm? Honorable Chair, the entire amount of one hundred and three thousand six hundred and fifty four has been remitted to the G R A. Thank you.
Wow, now we have one item discharged properly. Zongo Development Fund, are you here? Okay. Have you been sworn in? Not yet. No, but, uh, nothing, uh.
Don't go away, sir.
Northern Development, you are, you, don't go away yet. Zongo, please come.
Chief Director has Council of States joined us now. They are coming. They are just a stone through and it's more than thirty.
I. Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee. Touching the matter in issue. Shall be the truth. The whole truth. And nothing by the truth. So help me God.
Please introduce yourself and the people who came with you.
I'm Moses Sekabi Mills, the Chief Accountant. Thank you.
My name is Osman Ali, Head of Finance.
Harafat Sulaimana Abdullah. I'm the one coordinating the I G F.
Yes, I am Khalid Karim Ishak, Head of Internal Audit.
Okay, um.
I'm Haruna Mohammed, uh, Head of Research, Planning, Monitoring and Evaluation.
Sorry, your infraction is on paragraph twenty-one-fifty. And Deputy Rankin will take care of that.
And they're the one in charge of I G F. Is I G F a gap?
Please.
So why did you fail to transfer the accounting Momo to the I G F?
Honorable Chair, we haven't failed to transfer. We have, but it is such that we don't go to one vendor and get all what we want. Sometimes thousands it is, sometimes two thousand. When we get the accumulation, we straight away deposit, uh, at the I G, in the I G F account at the bank. So at the time auditors came, we had deposited seventy thousand. Uh, as we speak, we have done one hundred and thirty. So the progression is, uh, evident for, uh, auditors to even confirm. So we, we are paying, we are not like sitting down, not doing anything.
Yeah, I, I'm not getting that answer because you're in your management position, you earlier mentioned seventy thousand was large. But the auditors positions to, uh, two hundred, two zero three four-four nine-point-six should be transferred into the fund, I G F bank account.
Yeah, I'm saying, as we speak.
So, so, yes, what is your position on this?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm a transfer of seventy thousand into the I G F account. But just this morning, they have handed over a receipt to us indicating a further transfer of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred. So you know, hundred and thirty-nine thousand has been transferred. Hundred and twenty-nine thousand has been transferred.
So what is the challenge? Why all the funds cannot be transferred to the account? It's a money you took on Momo.
That was what I explained earlier, the earlier, the piecemeal collection of the money from vendors. Sometimes you go even hundred, you can't get, you move into, move on to the next place. But now we have been told that we could go to our bank. They can link the Momo account to, is it the our bank account, so that we can easily transfer. Tomorrow we are going to the bank, uh, Ghana Corporate Central Bank. As that, yes, but we booked an appointment. So we are going there tomorrow, we are linking and whatever is in the Momo, uh, we'll get to. We didn't know this, it was the first time we are operating the system. So the money was sitting there, we didn't touch as we speak. Now we have been told if we link straight away, the money will go. So, uh, half our assurance tomorrow, we will do the transfer.
Um, auditors, on what basis did you raise the two zero three four-four nine-point-six-one? Because if, um, he's saying that, uh, they will pay in piecemeal.
Yeah.
Uh, on what basis did you raise the two zero three four-four nine-point-six-one? If it's not I G F or monies that have already been collected?
Honorable Chair, I'm not sure I got the, because when you check the Momo, um, numbers that we have here, we see the revenue for each one of them and then the interest. So put together, you are going to have the two hundred and three thousand.
No, but, um, they are presenting it to us as if the money is not there, so ask and when, then they put it there. But if the monies are all on the Momo, then it shouldn't take you, how long did you issue, I mean, this report?
So this.
This report is about three months old or two months old.
Yes.
So then if you come and tell us that you have now realized that, uh, you can do piecemeal, you can do, I, I don't get it because if the monies are on the Momo account, as has been, um, confirmed by the Auditor General, what stops you from putting it into the I G F account?
I, Honorable Chair, as I said, uh, a while ago, we didn't do this quick technological transfer, we didn't. And the cash was sitting there, it's an accumulation of, uh, I G F.
If you have been able to put an additional forty, you said fifty-nine or fifty-nine thousand, what stops you from putting all?
No, that was because we are collecting it together like, it was the piecemeal that accumulated to give us that much, which we have deposited.
No, I, I, I don't get it. The monies have been established on the Momo. That is what the auditors are saying. So the monies are there, but you keep saying we are collecting, we are collecting, what are you collecting?
They came from the vendors, not going to collect from the facility users.
Yes.
If you go to vendor A, you may not get thousand. If you go to vendor B, it's like that, that's what, what I mean by piecemeal. It isn't like the direct transfer from.
Then how did the auditors establish the value?
No, no, we went and got the, uh, what is it? The printout from, um, M T N and gave to them that this is the money sitting there, it's in the account. But to get it out, we were going step by step from vendor to.
So the monies are with, um, the M T N.
It's there, it's there in the M T N account, yeah.
So maybe on this note, you have to write, the Chief Director have to write to M T N to tell M T N to fully disbest all the monies on the Momo account to the I G F account. That is a very simple thing for the Chief Director to do.
Uh, Honorable Chair, we attempted that. I once went there to tell the manager from, um, the, where we registered. He said, oh, at that time, they could only do that if it is an, uh, an individual's account. If it's a company account, like an agency account, they couldn't do that. That is what, uh, explanation he gave me.
Respectfully, um, Chief Director, we are directing you to write to M T N. Tell M T N that the monies they are holding on the Momo accounts are for governments and that they cannot obey the regulations. You cannot keep government money for more than forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours, I think. And so they should transfer the monies immediately into the I G F accounts that you provide for them. I mean, this, this, I mean, we, we, we can't, um, do otherwise. So respectfully, write to, um, M T N and ask M T N to upload the monies on the various Momo accounts in the names of, um, Zongo Development Authority to the I G F accounts that you provide for them. Thank you. Chief, Chief Director, when, when will the letter leave your office? This is something that can be done A S A P. Please speak into the mic. Okay, so maybe by close of, um, the week, we should have the monies in the account and the evidence presented to the Auditor General. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, this goes to, uh, institutions and organization. At, uh, mo, anytime they feel I G F monies are for the institution and not government money. And then through this medium, we are questioning them. Every I G F money is a government money. It's a public money. People feel that I G F money is their own institutional money, they can use it at their own will, they can do anything without taking even authorization. All I G F is a public money, is government of Ghana money. So we are sending this caution. Thank you very much.
Chief Director. Chief Director, you saw the mess with Northern Development Authority.
Yes, Miss.
And you give us some answers, which does not sit well with this committee. And I'm giving you thirty days. Go through these reports. I want you to unravel all the mess at Northern Development Authority. You send a report to us, Public Accounts Committee, within thirty days. You need to accept your authority over there. Let's find out about the issues, who owes what, when they are going to pay. And come on, eighty-two million, that they all, um. Okay, so will I expect the report within thirty days, sir? And those that we need to sanction, you have to let us know.
Had been, had been granted salary advances totaling three hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred, out of which a total of three hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and two has been paid back, leaving a balance of seventy-four thousand four hundred and ninety-seven-point-five-zero. The auditor's recommendation was that the Chief Executive should ensure that the accountant retrieves their seventy-four thousand Ghana C Ds. Uh, can you confirm if this amount has been collected so far?
Chair, um, so far we have been able to, uh, retrieve, um, seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-four-point-two-three with an outstanding balance of fifty-seven thousand and twenty-three Ghana C Ds, twenty-seven pesos.
Okay, auditors, can you confirm if an amount of seventeen thousand has been recovered?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that an amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-four-point-two-three has been recovered. And but out of that, the, there is a six thousand of the seventeen thousand that they paid into the operations account, which we have asked that they transferred it into the A G's account for onward transfer into the consolidated fund.
Mr. Accountant, when would this six thousand be transferred?
Oh, it was mistakenly deposited in the operations account, which we have, um, it's about, uh, when will we transfer? Oh, in fact, we, we are trying to, I mean, the, even do it today, but because of this meeting, we did it after that, we have to do that.
Uh, when, when, when was this collection done, this seventeen thousand? When was that done?
Uh, between the, what called, um, June and August.
Okay, so what legal, uh, means have you explored so far on retrieving the balance of fifty-something thousand?
So far we have written to all of them, uh, demanding the payment. In fact, uh, they have, they propose what we call the repayment shadow with us and we agree with them. And in fact, we have.
You, you explain in your management letter that you are exploring legal means. And I'm asking what legal means you have explored. And you have only indicated that you have written letters. Letters, how long?
The approach was to, first of all, I mean, the, uh, deal with them individually for them to agree with the period within which they will be able to settle with, uh, with us. In fact, you know, um, can I please, uh, be, give a bit of, uh, background of this particular issue so that we can appreciate, uh, exactly what has happened?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yes, uh, what happened was that in, in the year twenty nineteen, when the fund was established, salary will be not being paid. So the board approved, uh, salary advance for all staff pending the approval of, uh, the salary by F A W J's, uh, Salary Commission. So, um, in fact, it took us up to twenty-twenty-one May, over, almost over two years. So when the salary came, the salary was far below the salary that was in advance to staff. So I struggled the difference and, uh, the outstanding balance was shadowed for them to pay over a period of a time. So these individuals, in fact, the existing staff, they were able to exhaust it because they were there for that to collect based on their monthly salary payment. But this individual who designs, uh, couldn't be able to pay all before they left. And so we decided that we have to follow them so that they can, they, that's why we are, we have been, we are trying in the much as possible to, I mean, let them have, uh, what could, give them a shadow so that they could be able to pay. In fact, now we have settled that by thirty-first December, all of them should be able to clear everything.
Okay, Mr. Accountant, I want to understand you here.
Yes.
There are eight former staff of the fund. The seventeen thousand that has been recovered, is it from all eight or let's say two or three of the eight?
About two.
So are the six in the country or they have left the country?
Uh, well, only one that is outside the country. Um, only one, uh, which is, which is our thousand and twenty-eight Ghana C Ds. The one right is having a thousand and eight twenty-eight Ghana C D, forty pesos. The rest are all in Ghana.
Okay, so can you tell us what other legal steps you will take to recover the balance? Just as you indicated in your management letter.
Like I said earlier, for legal issue, we have not been, we have not, uh, taken the decision to, I mean, uh, take it through legal. But we have, uh, I, what the approach is in fact, agree with them to pay them and on installment basis. And they've agreed.
So I'm asking this because in the management response, you have indicated to the auditors that you are going to explore legal means to retrieve the balance. So if you are dealing with letters, letters will go and you might not even get responses.
Well, first of all, let me, uh, underscore this, uh, very important issue. Or like I said earlier, um, this individual did not, uh, actually take, uh, the salary advance just because they were taking salary advance. But the salary was advanced to them just to take care of their daily, uh, bread while the salary is being worked on. And when the salary came, they, the salary was far below the, the salary advance. And so it was now necessary for management to take a decision to shadowly for them to pay the remaining, the balance. So because they, they, they left, uh, we don't want to have a, an issue. We have, uh, if it was like, uh, you voluntarily take, uh, took a, what called the, what called the salary advance and that score, you'll be able to, I mean, I mean, use punitive measure to ensure that the, the money is recovered. But this case, uh, it was not their making anyway. And that's why we are as much as possible trying to see how we can find ways to be able to, I mean, to recover the money from them. And in fact, they have understood that they will pay. And they are voluntarily giving out their shadow as to when they will pay all the money. And I'm saying that we have, all of us agree with them that this payment will be made before the end of December.
If possible, can you, uh, provide all these agreements with these six people to the auditors? So at least the auditors will have something on paper that this is the agreement that has been reached with this six and that in the next two, three years or in the next one year, these balances will be paid. So at least auditors will have something to hold on to the next time we are able to deal with the matter.
No, that's, 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 that's okay, it's easier for it because we have some of the documentation being here. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think we are in your hands now.
Thank you very much, sir. I think that will be all for Zongo. Let me find, Zongo Development Fund. What about Council of State? Is Council of State here? Zongo Development Fund, you are discharged.
Chief Director, the gentleman who sat by you before these people, the one in blue, may I know his name and his designation, please?
Speak into a microphone.
Chief Director, what's, what's the name and his designation, please? Please speak into the mic.
I've forgotten the other name. His first name is Emmanuel, but he's the new acting CEO for Northern Development Authority.
I pray he carries on like this, because clearly, he, I mean, he's taking steps to, one, understand the reports, and also takes, he's taking steps to address the infractions. And I like his attitude, and this should be the style of all the CEOs who are coming on board, that if you come to inherit a situation, you don't lament about it, but rather you take steps to see how best you can solve, or reduce, or minimize the impact of the situation. So the acting CEO of Northern Development Authority, I'd like to commend you for that attitude. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, whilst we, we fill in the time, I want to find out from the Chief Director. Clearly, in spite of all the reasons you may have on how the development authorities were managed, and, and therefore this challenge of answering to the infractions that have occurred, is, is clearly an indictment, public funds are at risk. But now, you are the Chief Director, and these come under you. For now, to avert a recurrence of this development, what arrangements do you have in place? What measures are you putting in place that will be deterrent enough that we would not have this recurring, and these agencies coming before us the following year? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Our director, internal auditor, is here, Madame Stella. When I took over, I indicated that all OGM agencies, every quarter there will be a briefing, not just what you've done, but challenges and others. And my idea was supported by the Deputy Chief of Staff Administration, and we had one session, and getting closer, the bonding and being open to each other. I know this, some of these occurrences will be minimized, if not totally eliminated, it will be minimized. Previously, we didn't have that opportunity. It was like, whether they were even in Tamale or Accra, we didn't know. And they were drawing their strength from Minister of Finance, I've mentioned this. This time around, once we are, the idea is that every quarter we'll be meeting, we'll get to know some of these issues. And we also want to bring on board, fortunately, this time around, some of the agencies have left OGM. So we have a very sizable decision, and want to bring all of them under the Office of the Present Audit Committee, so that these occurrences will not take place again.
Chairman, let me also admonish that politicians or political appointees should also allow the public and civil servants to work. Let's, let's don't use our powers to unstratched terms, and later turn out to blame the civil servants. From the Chief Director's narrative, there was just somebody who used his influence to say that, do it this way. From, if I listen to him very well, even though they wanted them to be reporting adequately to them. Today, they are here, we are taking him on, on when the people who took the decisions, those political exposed persons are probably sitting somewhere. So let's allow them to work. Basically, we, we tied them too much, and we sort of put some fear in civil servants. When they see the right thing, they are even afraid to talk. You understand? So let's, let's admonish them too. If you are a political, otherwise we'll start bringing them here, even if you leave office, but we'll call you to come and answer, instead of calling the civil servants to come and be facing this thing. Thank you.
That is why we have our laws governing us. So whether you are civil servants or a political appointee, the law is the law. And the, and acting Chief Director knows the law, so that if you sit and close your eyes, or turn your back in the name of, you claim is a political appointee, and you know that what the person is doing is not right, and is against the law, and then later you come here to come and announce and say that. Meanwhile, the auditors use the law to come out with their reports. That is not an excuse. When it's wrong, it is wrong, irrespective of who does it. And that is why this committee is here, to examine these reports, and find out how best we can bring everybody to book. And so if it means bringing in someone to come and answer for the infractions they have created, we wouldn't, I mean, prevent that, irrespective of who you are. But the law is the law, and let's work with the law. The auditors worked with the law, and based on that, they provided us with this report. And so must everybody, whether you are a civil servant or a political appointee, let the law be your guide. The PFM is very, very clear. And so that if you know that the PFM is being flouted, and you turn a blind eye on it, and later come back to say, yes, I saw it, I knew it, they did it, I don't think that is how we should go. Thank you. Chief Director, Council of State, we are still waiting for them.
Chief Director, if Council of State is not here, we will suspend sitting for, for one hour until they come. So we'll be back, we'll be back at two. And colleagues, two o'clock means we start working at two. So... Is he here now?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow. Can they, can they be sworn in then?
I...
I, Abdallah Kukatahiro.
Valentine Mayu.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee...
That the evidence I shall give before this committee...
Touching the matter in issue...
Touching the matter in issue...
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Gentlemen, you are welcome. Council of State, gentlemen, did you receive letter from the Chief Director regarding this sitting?
Yes, please.
So why are you late? Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Thank you, my name is Valentine Mayu, Head of Administration and Hema Resource at the Council of State, Secretariat.
My name is Abdallah Kukatahiro, Principal Accountant, Council of State.
Gentlemen, are you aware of the time of reporting for this committee?
Yes, Sir, ten o'clock.
Why are you not here by ten?
Honorable Chairman, we are deeply sorry for our inability to appear...
Give, give us the reason, otherwise you are taking this committee for granted. Were you aware you were supposed to be at ten o'clock?
Yes, Sir.
Why didn't you show up at ten o'clock?
Sir, a new acting executive secretary has been appointed to the Council of State, and I needed to clear some issues with him...
Okay.
Before...
So, a new executive director for Council of State?
Yes.
And in the Parliament of Ghana, which one would you, which one would you respond to?
Parliament, Sir.
Then why didn't you respond?
We are deeply sorry.
No, deeply sorry is a different thing altogether. Why didn't you respond? Why did you think that the new executive secretary was more important than Parliament of Ghana?
Sir, we acknowledge that the executive secretary to the Council of State is not more important than members of this august committee.
So, so you are taking us, you have taken this committee for granted, is that not so?
No, Sir.
Now that you are here, let's ask you a few questions. Your infraction is on paragraph two-one-three-zero, and on end salary, and that will be handled by Honorable Cletus Depala.
Thank you, Chairman. Council of State, do you, do you have attendance register for your staff?
Yes, Sir.
So, how come, how come that you validated a staff that vacated post to receive government money?
Sir, the rules are clear regarding the grant of leaves, annual leave to staff at the Council of State. This particular matter was an exceptional case, a case of exercise of indiscretion on the part of the officers who were supposed to validate officers for demands that these, these issues occurred. Thank you, Sir.
Do you, so, can you explain further what you mean by what you said?
Sir, the, the processes for the grant of leave, there are three key processes. First, an officer is required to complete a form, a leave application form. The second stage, the officer is required to submit the application form to his or her supervisor for a recommendation on whether he or she should be released. The third stage is, the recommendation by the supervisor is taken to the executive secretary, who then considers for approval. In this particular instance, Sir, the first two were done, but the last stage, which is the approval by the executive secretary, was not, was not done.
This infraction has to do with one Emile Akono, an Assistant Director II-B, Staff Number seven-four-seven-four-one-nine, who vacated post on the second of January twenty twenty-four. Yet he was, she was validated, and she took government money. How do you...
Sir, as I said earlier, this was an exercise of indiscretion on our part. We failed the state in that regard.
Did you... Okay, you...
Sir, what I said is that this was completely unexpected in view of the fact that we had clear rules or procedure for the grant of leave. And it's, it was an exercise of indiscretion. We didn't act right.
Honorable member, honorable member, please, if I could take over here, has the money been retrieved?
Yes, Sir.
You've retrieved all the amount?
Yes, Sir.
Okay, auditors, could you confirm if the money has been retrieved, please?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the amount has been recovered.
All right, thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph two-one-three-three, and...
I, I just want to find out if you have acquitted the forty thousand as stated in the Auditor General's report.
Yes, please.
Auditors, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
Thank you very much.
And Council of State, next time when you are where, they have to come and meet Parliament. That should be your number one thing. You don't want to mess with Parliament, we'll condemn them.
Thank you very much, Sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to find out if, based on this experience, he, he and the establishment has any measures in place to ensure that there is no recurrence of this kind of situation?
Sir?
As soon as you apply for leave, we ensure that you are at post until you are handed a letter granting you leave. Previously, officers would apply, and on the assumption they will be granted leave, they would, they would leave. So this is the measure we have taken. Thank you, Sir.
You see, this is a Public Financial Management Act two, twenty-sixty... You see, this is a Public Financial Management Act two, twenty-sixteen, and infraction, this infraction is on ninety-eight. And as part of, um, on earned salaries and on acquitted payments, if you read it, it will tell you that any person who contravenes section one, which I'm not going to take all the time to read, in addition to the penalties specified in the subsection, A, liable for any liability contracted on behalf of the government as a result of the contravention and subject to disciplinary action by government, including dismissal, demotion, or suspension. That is when you contravene these. It includes dismissal, demotion, or suspension. So if you are in charge of accounts, make sure you get a copy of the Public Financial Management Act twenty-sixteen. Anytime there's an amendment, you get that one. Because next time is going to be either dismissal, demotion, or suspension. Go and sin no more. You are discharged.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Chief Director, you are also discharged. Thank you. Now, um... Colleagues, um, we are on suspension till two o'clock. Thank you very much.